Okay, thank you everybody for joining. Welcome to the November 30th special board meeting. As the announcement that this special board meeting is, this one is a single subject. And progress report on the Stonebridge Country Club Facilities Improvement Plan. I'm going to put some charts up here and. Let me put those up. All right, can you see the charts?
Not yet.
All right. All right, can you see them now or?
No.
No, okay, Ben, go ahead and take it back. All right, sorry about that.
There we go.
All right. Okay, good. Can you see it now?
Yes, we can see it.
Yep, all right, put that in slide mode there, Ben.
Yes, sir.
This is the most important one. Okay, so let me, let me start off by saying the, the board approved a resolution at our October 23rd meeting that authorized the expenditure of $125,000 to start the facilities improvement planning process. Been a bit more than 30 days since our, since then, and our next board meeting is not until late July. So we use this special board meeting to provide a progress report on how we're doing. This first chart is.
January for the next board meeting.
What did I say?
July.
July, oh yeah, okay. Excuse me, January, January 23rd or 2nd or something, I think is our next board meeting, but. So first, the first chart is the facilities improvement plan. This is a high level timeline. First of all, there's three key dates on here. The first is October 23rd. That's when the, the, the board approved the proceeding with the facilities improvement plan. The second is the member vote that is scheduled for the late fourth quarter of 2021, sometime December, October to December timeframe. And the, the third important date is the start of construction, the payoff of the, of the present loan in the end of the first quarter of 2023. And the obtaining a new construction loan so the construction can start. And then the construction is scheduled to be complete in late 2023. So that's the, those are the three important dates in here. Now this, for the construction, for the facilities improvement plan purposes, there are three important dates here, three important phases. The first is the master planning phase that starts in the fourth quarter of 2020 now, and it goes through the fourth quarter of 2021. And it's roughly about 12 to 13 months long. The mess, that's the period during which we have the master fit, master planning phase and preparing for project vote. Second phase is the detailed design permitting and bidding phase. And this runs from the fourth quarter of 2021 to the first quarter of 2023, and it's about 15 to 16 months long. And then the final phase is the, is the construction phase, which runs from the second quarter of 2023 to the fourth quarter of 2023 and is roughly about nine months long. So that's the, those are the three phases of the, of the, of the improvement plan. The, the phase we're going to talk about today is the master planning phase. That's where we are right now. Okay, now, now I should point out along the bottom of the chart that the, that the, the chart says that we'll have member communication throughout the process. And this is an important step in the process and it continues throughout. I got some sage advice from recently from lieutenant, from General Len Wizard, who you may recall, General Wizard was the, he spearheaded the club renovation project. And he told me that there can never be too much communication on a project like this. And he was an example of lots of communication on the club improvement project, and we should duplicate that. And I totally agree with him. Member communication is critical. The schedule that we have here gives us time to proceed diligently while allowing time to communicate with members and address their. Wait. Okay, next chart. So let's talk about what's going to happen during the master planning, planning phase. This is what we'll be doing, this is what we'll be doing during the master planning phase. There's two parallel projects. Golf is a slightly different place than the, than the facilities project because we already have an architect, Kip Schulzeis, and we already have the initial concept design to work with. But during the master planning, planning phase, the golf course renovation project team will continue to evaluate the existing golf course, continue to gather member comments, engage with Kip Schulzeis, our architect, to address the comments and concerns that some of the members have expressed, and prepare detailed cost analysis and refine the conceptual design suitable for a boat package. Now, there's, there's a difference between the designs that we need for a boat package and the detailed designs needed for construction, and we'll talk about that in a minute. But this, this is really the designs necessary for a boat package. On the club facility side, we're just getting started, but the, the key tasks during the master, master planning phase are to measure and document existing building structures and property lines, do the code and zoning analysis, perform conceptual designs and alternatives, engage specialized professional services as necessary. For example, civil engineers surveying those sorts of things, solicit member feedback throughout the process and refine the conceptual designs suitable for a boat package. And so these are the tasks that are going to be accomplished during the next, the next 12 to 13 months. These are the sorts of things that they'll be doing. So what do we need to come out of these next, these next, these tasks to go to the next chart? Those are the tasks they're going to perform, they're going to be performing. These are the deliverables. The first thing we need from the, from the, from this, this phase is a member boat package, a single member boat package consisting of the schematics for the golf course and the building plans and specifications. Alternatives considered, project budgets, project schedules, proposed source of funds and financing, temporary facilities during construction, how the, and that, that refers to how the club will function during the construction, ongoing construction during 2023, because if both projects are approved, we'll have both the golf course and, and whatever we do on the facility side going on at the same time in the summer of 2023. I mentioned that because if you're, you're thinking about a world cruise, that might be a good summer to do it because things will be, things will be torn up a bit in, in the club, but that's, that, that is part of the planning process. And then, of course, the member benefits of the proposed project. The second deliverable is a member communication and engagement strategy. And as, as General Wizard, you can't communicate too much in this sort of a process. So we need to have a, we need to have a strategy for the planning and for the communication about the, the progress the teams are making and the ultimate package that they're going to bring to, bring to a vote. Regular member progress updates, updates to neighborhoods and affinity group engagements. And by affinity group engagements, we're referring to the nine haulers and the 18 haulers, the fitness groups, the book clubs, the card, card players, those card, those groups. Make sure they understand what we're doing for the, on this project and where, where the project is headed and what the benefits will be to them. And of course, the proposed vote communication. How do we explain to the members what we're, what we're proposing? Because there'll be two projects on the table, and how do we propose to, how do we plan to communicate to the, to the members and to get a successful vote? So these are the deliverables, the, the bottom line deliverable from this, this next phase that we're in right now is to deliver a single well-supported boat package for the golf and club facilities. This is a combination of both the boat package and the communication strategy. It combines to give us this well-supported package and a successful package. These are the deliverables that will be part of this first phase. Okay, so who's going to do this work? Tim and his team, of course, his management team will be deeply involved, of course. This is the team we've put together to bring this phase to a successful vote. First of all, we hired an owner's representative, and the experience of our club and others, other clubs is caused us to realize that we needed to have an owner's rep and bring that owner's rep on immediately, early on in the process. And we've done that. We hired an owner's rep who's going to be responsible for both projects. And Jeff, Jeff Nunner is the gentleman that we hired. He's on the line today, I believe. Jeff's a professional engineer, a licensed contractor with 20 years of experience. Some of the clubs he's worked at recently as, as doing as a owner's rep is Royal Ponceana, Collyard's Reserve, Quail West, Sterling Oaks, and Fort Lauderdale Yacht Club, and is, as well as a number of other commercial projects, such as Ave, Ave Maria University and the Cleveland Clinic and such. So he's quite experienced at this, at this process of owner's representation. The purpose of the owner's rep is a, is to bring professional expertise to represent the interests of the clubs and the members, to manage the overall project, oversee the architects and the other professional services that we'll bring on, manage the project schedules and manage the project budgets. So that's the, that's the owner's rep, and we're glad to have Jeff on board, and he's, he's already been to a number of meetings with us and grow well underway. The other, the other part of the process, the other part of the team that's going to be doing the work is the, the ad hoc committee, which oversees the facilities improvement plans. This, the ad hoc committee is responsible to provide input to the hiring of the owner's rep, which they did, the architect, which they're doing right now, and other consultants to represent all members' perspectives in the interaction with the owner's rep, the architects and others. And I say all, all, all members, because these teams, these, these two subcommittees represent not individual neighborhoods, but they represent all members and ensuring that this project is successful. Ensuring all members' concerns are appropriately addressed. Liaisoning with the board committees as necessary, for example, the house, the grounds, the communication, finance and others, of course, will need to be communicated with also as we go through the project. Five regular updates to the board and the members on, on the staffs of the plan. And the key is, and as I mentioned on the earlier chart, there's two subcommittees here, but they've got one deliverable to, to the board, and that is a successful member vote. And by successful member vote, I mean not just a package that we can vote on, and it's got, it's got unaddressed concerns in it and, and so on and so forth. We want a package that's developed that is, is one that will get favorable votes from the members and succeed. That's what we're looking for from these ad hoc committees. So who's on the ad hoc committees? We selected two ad hoc committees to work these projects, next chart please, and deliver a successful member vote. The member, these are, these are members with the energy, enthusiasm and demonstrated willingness to contribute. They represent all the neighborhoods, but as mentioned on the prior chart, their duty is to all the members and to deliver Stonebridge to, to Stonebridge an acceptable plan and a successful vote. There's no, you'll notice other than the, the chairs, there's no board members on, on here. And that's, we did that by design. The board members, we felt, have an input through the board process and have significant input through the board process, but we wanted the committees to have members on them to get broadened member pers- perspective on the, both the golf project and the club facilities improvement project. So that's the ad hoc committee and the two subcommittees. Okay, so what have we been up to over the past 30 days or so, since the board charged us with getting these projects underway? Let me turn this over for a moment to Tom to talk about the, the golf course renovation and what, what they've done in the past 30 days. Tom?
You did by the organizer.
Okay. And you're on, go ahead, I can hear you. Good.
Okay, um, okay, just for everybody's, I think we probably all know, the, the golf course renovation committee has really existed since October 2017. At that time, it was a subcommittee to the golf, golf and greens committee. The new and current group had our first meeting on November 16th, basically did introductions. We got to meet Jeff Nunner, the owner's rep, which we wanted to do. Understand and discuss the goal of the committee, which is to get, as Larry just said, get to a member vote in the fall of 2021. Each of the members of the committee were provided a printed copy of Kip Schulzeis's whole-by-whole recommendations. We had some brief discussions regarding member feedback. You know, and that's an interesting, I mean, the course design that Kip gave us is very much a reflection of what the members have asked for in the focus groups that Kip did. The concerns that we are really facing and that will need to be addressed and that we're very sensitive to are really concerns more focused on changing views from the various residents throughout the community. You know, the things we have coming up that we think we need to do is Countryside is a local club who Kip Schulzeis did their course for them recently. So we are going to meet with Countryside and hopefully learn a lot of good things, a very few bad things about their experience with Kip, how that project went and how they got it done successfully. Also, we, we, we plan to meet with Kip Schulzeis himself to address questions, his contract, understand options and alternatives and that exist for us and really find out what the process is in order to get this done. So, um, you know, we, that was our first meeting. It was a good start. The notes from that meeting are on our website, to Larry's point about communication, and we will make sure that we keep that up to date. So that's kind of where we are so far.
Okay, thank you, Tom. Gail, you want to talk a little bit about what's going on with the facilities, the club facilities improvement process team?
Thanks, Larry. Well, the club facility improvements committee has been busy. The team was formed. We've had two meetings so far in November. The third meeting will be this coming Friday. I think Larry already spoke to the hiring of Jeff Nunner, and, and one of the things we learned in the process was as Jeff is a civil engineer, he could also bridge over and help us on the golf side when, when that time comes. So, so that's a very positive thing moving forward is that Jeff will be able to interact and help on, with both committees. We have interviewed three architectural firms. We've interviewed Chambers, David Porman Architects and RG Architects, and we're awaiting competitive proposals right now for the master planning phase. We have a couple in, and we're waiting for one more so that we can evaluate them and, and move forward. So that's where we're at.
Okay, and Gail, those, those proposals will not be for particular designs. They're just the, they're, they're proposals that describe how the architects will go through the process of coming up with a conceptual design. Is that right?
Correct. We've provided them a list of specific things to consider and provide back to us what we want in the vote package that they will be delivering, because we're hiring, we're going to hire the architect, tech firm right now. Hopefully, it will be the architectural firm that continues on to the construction and design phase. But this is to, for the delivery of the vote package. So it'll be the schematics, drawings, et cetera. But we have nothing set right now. So what a design would look like. We want them to bring that back to us.
Right. Okay, thanks. So that's what the, the, the two subcommittees have been up to in the past 30 days. If you go to the next chart, Ben, we'll talk, and Tom talked a little bit about this already, about the, the next steps, the things that the committee will, the subcommittees will be focused on in the next, in the next 30 to 60 days. Tom, anything else you wanted to say on that?
I mean, well, just that our meeting with Countryside, Tim has arranged a webinar call for us tomorrow. We will have that next Tuesday on the 8th. We will have a webinar with Mr. Schulzeis, and hopefully some things that we learn tomorrow with Countryside, we will be able to address with him. You know, budget-wise, we'll be working with the finance committee, et cetera, to understand what the, what the dollar amounts look like, and just to make sure that we get max value from Kip out of whatever that budget turns out to be. And then I think as Dale mentioned, that the schedule, the milestone steps that we have to hit in order to be ready for a, a good package for the fall of 2021.
Great, thanks. Gail?
And on the club facility side, once we have all the side-by-side, apples-to-apples comparisons of the architects and their proposals, we're going to select one. And we also then plan to visit some recently renovated local club facilities just to get some insight, to take a look at what's kind of current in design and, and gain some insight there. Once we have the architect on board, we'll begin schematic designs driven by what we heard from member survey, survey results, developing a preliminary budget and a mild schedule. And one thing I, I didn't mention, as Tom said, our, the notes of our meetings will be posted under the board and committee section, under the facility improvements ad hoc committees. So you'll be able to, if you want to keep up with us on, on a more timely basis than once a month, if, as we do these updates every couple of weeks, then you can look for the minutes there and you can see what we've done.
Right, I, I neglected to put that on the chart, but that's a good point. Thank you, Tom and Gail for bringing that up. If you go to the homepage and go to Boards and Committee and click down, one of the lists under the list of committees is the Ad Hoc Committee, Ad Hoc Improvement Committee. And all of our, all of our charts, all of our minutes are on that, on that website, as well as the videos of, of various meetings that we've had, where we're taking the audio. Okay, so that is our, our update. We've been, we've been, been well on our way. Assembled, I think, a great team to bring the first phase of this, of this project to a successful vote. Does the board have any, any questions about where we are?
I have a couple of questions. If nobody else wants to go first, I will be happy to.
Okay, go ahead.
All right, um, the original bridging to the future on the project oversight recommendations, there was the, ad hoc committee was going to be formed to provide input into hiring the owner's rep. Did this committee participate in the hiring of the owner's rep? Who sat in on that meeting?
We hired the, we, we, the owner's rep.
I'd like to know who.
Okay, I'm going to tell you. The owner's rep, the owner's rep was hired at the very beginning. That was probably the first thing we did. That was Dave Harper and myself, Gail and Tom and Tim.
So the, the committee was not participating in that process?
The committee, the committee had not been formed at that time, no.
Okay, well, it did say they were going to provide input into the hiring, and I just wanted to find out if they did.
Okay.
Also, on that same page, it says at the bottom, the director of grounds will oversee, will serve as owner's rep for the golf course renovation. Somehow, that has changed, and now the owner's rep, who had a scope of work for one project, has now been expanded to include the two projects.
Well, I'll explain that. Originally, our intent was that the owner's rep would only be focused on the facilities. But as we talked to the owner's reps and realized that he had civil engineering experience, he didn't have any golf course experience, and of course, we have a lot of confidence in Kip and Mark and Eric as, as part of that process. But when we realized that Jeff had some civil engineering experience, as well as probably more important, project management experience, we decided, as we want, to also participate in the early planning phases of the golf course project. Put that in his scope of work and his contract before we signed it. So that was, that was decided before we went on contract with Jeff.
In his contract, it says he's going to coordinate. I don't know if coordinate, in my mind, is the same as what you're describing, which sounds like a much broader scope of work that I don't see in the contract that was online, that, that was signed. So I really have some questions. I mean, not, he might be a very great civil engineer, but he has no golf course experience, and I think you're trying to fit a round penny into a square hole, and I don't know if that's the best way for us to go. I mean, if the golf course project is going to cost somewhere between $3 and $5 million, it seems to me we really do deserve to have an owner's rep that's specific to that task and not try to change the scope of work for Mr. Nunner from working on the facilities improvement to now working on facilities improvement and golf course. I don't see how that is a logical jump.
Okay. Tim, you want to talk to that at all? Have any comments?
Yes, yep. Yeah, the way we looked at this from the beginning was that Mark, I believe, would be the owner's rep. And that's often the case for the golf course renovation, that the superintendent, in our case, director of grounds, would be the owner's rep throughout the project. As Mr. Travel said, one of the things that we noticed early on with, with Jeff was that he could be, and have said to us, especially during the planning phase, because he knows people at the county, he knows people with Southwest Florida Water Management, which would be involved with the golf course renovation when it comes to moving in water, you know, ones that might get reconfigured. So that's where we saw the benefit to having Jeff involved on the golf course side. So with Jeff is that, up to the point of, you, you, up to the point of getting actually shoved over in the ground, Jeff will be more involved on the permitting side to assist with that as we need. After the construction begins, it's going to be more of Mark's baby, so to speak, his project that he'll work on directly with Kip and the general contractor. Jeff will be available to, and I think that's where it says something about coordinating efforts, you know, so when, if we're doing something, say with the bistro, and we have to move some fill through the golf course, you know, that's where the coordination comes in during construction from the facility side and the golf side. So does that, that help answer your question, Mrs. Gall?
Well, it does explain a bit his beginning role, but truthfully, I would think when we are actually under the renovation project for the golf course, it would pay to have an owner's rep, just like it pays to have the owner's rep for the facilities improvement. There's, I, Mark, not to take anything away from Mark's skill, but an owner's rep has a different role than Mark's role. And I think you should really seriously think about an owner's rep for this major project.
Okay.
The construction phase especially.
Okay, we'll look into that. Yep, thank you.
Excuse me, Betsy, this is Tom. One of, one of the things that I think Tim alluded to was the fact that these two projects are going to be in operation simultaneously. It seemed to make sense that Jeff would be working on both of them to make sure that, you know, maybe the word coordination is, is the right word, that we take advantage of every scale or opportunity that we have to make these two projects dovetail and work at the same time and to benefit both projects. And, and I guess if you, if we had a separate guy for the golf course, I don't know whether there would be any conflict there, but I think Mark seemed to be enthused to have Jeff involved in that role. And so that also gave us comfort that Jeff was a good choice for this.
Well, I could see getting to the member vote for sure, but once the project is underway, this is a huge site. I mean, how is Jeff going to be taking care of the facilities improvement and also oversee this huge project? I'm just putting it out there. I question it, and I'm going to leave it to your expertise and your committee.
Okay, thank you. Other questions or comments?
I have a question.
All right, thank you, Drew.
Yeah, I, I don't have a good.
I don't have a good answer to this and I've gotten this question as to why this is a major facilities improvement project that the facilities committee has no role in this. I don't have an answer to that. And I'm getting that question. We don't have any role, we don't have any representation and it's a facilities thing.
Right, it, we, it's a, it's a special ad hoc committee.
I understand what it is. That's, my question is why the facilities committee doesn't have any role in this process at all? When it's a facilities project?
Okay.
Do you have an answer to that?
Well, we, when we formed the committees, we got some of them volunteers, some were names that we, we went out and asked for. We didn't have to get any names from the, didn't, did not look at any particular at the grounds and facilities committee. No, we did not.
Well, the question is why? I mean, I know that's the case. The question is why?
Is there, is there nobody on any of the committee, any, either committee that was on your, on your grounds committee?
Excuse me?
Is it, was there anybody from your grounds committee that was on, on the list of names that we showed you?
No.
Oh, okay. All right.
That's what I'm saying. This committee has no, no part in this process whatsoever. This process, you keep using the word facilities and yet there's no place for the committee.
Right.
Nor would handle any facilities project.
Yeah, well.
I don't have an answer to, to, to give people and I, I'm not hearing one from you either.
Right. Well, you know, we didn't, we didn't look at the individual committees because the finance committee is involved, the House Committee is involved, the grounds committee is involved.
House committee is not involved, excuse me.
No, I mean, the, the, the House Committee is affected by what we're doing here.
So that's your answer?
Yeah, we didn't, we didn't look at individual committees.
We didn't look at it.
Yeah.
That's your answer?
Yeah.
Well, I think, I think that as a board member, the different committees will be, you will provide the insight and oversight. I mean, when we had volunteers for the committees.
We have no role.
I think that we are going to liaison. If you look at our roles and responsibilities, it says we will liaison with the committees where it's appropriate to get input into what we're doing. We don't have, for example, Tom's using his golf and greens committee to provide insight into him some in, in addition to the members that are on his committee. So at, at this point, for example, in my committee, we have, there's nothing to run past and, I mean, we have the member survey results was represent all the members of the community. We, we just don't have any schematic to run past people for additional input. I mean, we're always open to input and comments, concerns expressed to us from anyone in the community.
Larry, I have a question. You said, and it's been back and forth in several of the emails, that the board has the oversight and the board will be informed. And you said the board just now has significant oversight. Could you just describe to me how we're going to have any oversight when it seems like you have two ad hoc committees working with the golf committee and with strategic planning committee? Where does the board's role come in so that we know what's going on before you present it to the community so that if we have any maybe ideas that might be helpful, we can participate? I don't really like giving up my role as a board member to a committee and finding out when the general membership does because I don't think that's our role as board members. So could you just tell me how we will have significant oversight, when and where and what's the process?
Well, the, the, the description that I gave on Chart Five was that the, the board will liaison with the board committees and that's all the, all the committees that are affected. And that was what I was describing a minute ago, what, what committees were affected. And the board members will be briefed periodically on, on the, on the, the status of the plan. Ultimately, the, the board approves, the committee, subcommittee has no authority to approve. The board approves the expenditure funds, the board approves bringing it to a vote, the board approves the vote package. So that's the, that's the, the.
Okay. But maybe the board would like to know before we ask to approve something, maybe we would like to have some input into or at least awareness and discussion of what you are doing. I feel like you have rushed this project and now you've pulled the brakes back and you're starting to inform us. But if we hadn't pushed for it, we wouldn't be having this meeting. So we need to have some reassurance from your strategic planning and ad hoc committees. How are you going to keep the board informed and in this process? Because we are the board.
Yeah. Okay, well, I would, I would propose that. I'm sorry.
Have you thought about that?
Yeah, I, I believe the, 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 the intent was that the committees would inform the board on a regular basis.
Tell me how that's going to happen. To read it in order to get informed, I would like to know how we're going to be informed. It sounds like you're just going to go forward with your plans and we're going to hear about it. And I'd like to know if that's the way it's going to be.
Yeah. I, I would, I would commit to the board getting briefed every 30 days on the project through the, through the vote phase.
Through the what?
And, and then we'll, we'll reassess how often it needs to be.
Through the what? I didn't hear what you said.
The, I, I would, I would commit to the, the ad hoc committees providing a present, a briefing to the to the board on 30 days on the progress they're making.
So a meeting such as this where we would actually hear from and be able to ask questions?
Absolutely, sure.
Okay, thank you. That would work.
And this is the, this is the first 30 days. We've been a little bit more than 30 days, but this is the first 30 day report now. And I, I would propose that we continue to do these on a regular basis.
Thank you.
Can, am I muted or can you hear me?
No, you're good, Sandy. Go ahead.
Okay, I just have a comment. Tom and Larry, have you had an opportunity to look over the huge book that was done for the golf course renovation 10 years ago that showed what went well, what went wrong and timing, et cetera?
Eddie, this is Tom. I have not seen that book.
Well, I know they, that Diane Hammer was in charge of putting it together. I'm sure Mark has it and probably would be very helpful to you.
Okay, I'm sure that's something we'll have to look at. Mark, so Mark should have a copy of that.
Or maybe Tim. I'm not sure who has it.
Okay. All right, thank you.
I have a question. Um, this is kind of a fundamental, first of all, I agree with Betsy's comments that I see these committees as advisory committees to the board. So I'm very happy to hear that the committees will be reporting up to the board and the board will have some input into the decision making here. I, one question I have is, is kind of a fundamental question. And I guess this is something that you have looked into and maybe Jeff Nunner has some experience with, but have other clubs done two major renovations at the same time, both the clubhouse and the golf course? And have we looked at that experience of doing these both at the same time?
Uh, is I don't think Jeff's got a mic. Tim, do you, do, is Jeff got a able?
Do you know if anyone's had experience doing both major renovations at the same time?
Off the top of my head, I don't, but I can certainly ask around. I would certainly assume that there are clubs that have done that, but off the top of my head, I can't say that one comes to mind.
Yeah, just, and just to, just to provide just a thought about why we, why we did that. There is a, the thought was that if we're going to have a major disruption to the club, like, like the tearing up of the golf course and all of that would involve, or we're going to have a major undertaking in the, in the Bistro, fitness center area, that sort of thing, that's going to tear up a lot of area. Would, it would make sense to do both at once. So we the summer of 2023 would, would have to make adjustments one time for both projects rather than have one, one year and one another year or two years out. And there was strong, strong, I think, feeling that the members wanted it sooner rather than later. And so thinking those two together and saying it makes sense to disrupt the club once in the summer of 2023 rather than over a couple of years.
Okay, well, I mean, just a consideration. The other thing from an operational point of view is we have friends that live in both Mediterranean Kensington. And they both did major renovations on their facilities and did outdoor kitchens, you know, expansion of their outdoor area. And one thing that happened in those two clubs that members were not aware of is that the club was not able to afford operating both kitchens. So I think that we need to work into our plan in addition to getting member input, get sort of operational cost input as to how that may change what are, you know, what it looks like and the experience that the Stonebridge members will have going forward.
Tim, you want to talk to that?
I'm muted, yeah. Uh, yeah, so as far as the operational component, there's a couple of pieces we'll have to look at. Not only how that functions and flows, but also the cost of those operations. Obviously, we don't know yet what that might look like, so we're not there yet. But after we have some ideas on what operations could be affected and impacted, then we need to look at what costs, operational costs are associated with those.
Right. And I think that should be part of this planning too, is we make a decision on what that plan will look like.
Definitely, yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
That would, I think that would make sense, Kathy, to be in the vote package that describes the impact of, of the, of the proposed design and the proposed renovations, what impact that would have on operational costs.
Yes, okay.
That would be something I think we'd be discussing in the vote package.
Right.
Uh, other questions? Jim, Dave? Any questions? Comments?
Larry, I want to thank you for, for adding some additional people to your committees. I think that was important to get broader representation and I, that was a good idea.
Yeah, I, I think, and I appreciate the comments I got from several people about that. You know, my, my, our initial thought was to keep the committee small, but as, as we thought more about it and thought about it in the context of trying to get the vote package together that will satisfy the members that will answer all their questions and address all their concerns and be successfully voted for, voted on by the members. As we thought about that, it made more sense, it made greater sense to have more people on the committees without without getting it out of hand. And I think the committees are seven each, which is a good size and we've got a good representation across the, across Stonebridge. So I, I, I agree. It's, it was a good idea. Appreciate the comment from, from everybody that gave that. Okay.
Question. How long will we have the owner representatives through the whole process beginning to end?
Yes.
Okay, all right.
Yeah, that's, that's our intent and, and what his and what his responsibilities are, just like the committee's, subcommittee's responsibilities are going to change when we move from the master planning phase to the detailed design permitting phase and bidding phase and then to the construction phase. His tasks and his responsibilities will will, will evolve also. But our intent is to have the owner's rep through the whole period.
Okay, because I see that we have as part of our resolution, have funded it through the master reserves at a class not to exceed 125,000. So I presume we've taken that into consideration and that, that I presume includes both the architects rendering and the owner's rep?
Tim, you want to talk to that? You?
Sure, yeah. The 125,000 that the board approved at the October meeting is not only for the owner's rep, but the other services, the other consultants that will be involved. There might be a little bit more with Kip and then, as you said, with the facilities architect will have costs associated with that as well.
So all of that will be within the 125,000?
To get us to a vote, correct.
Yes. Phase one, that's not through the whole project. We have funded it through phase one?
Yes.
Correct, yes. We, we, we've assumed that, you know, there's going to be through our reserves. We've assumed additional consulting and design fees, permitting fees that will come in years two and three, year, year 22 and fiscal year 23.
Jim, did you have a question? Jim?
Uh, he's muted, I think.
Can you unmute him, Ben?
Yeah, can you hear me now? I can hear you. Can you hear me now? Yes? All right, I have one question and then, then a comment. The first is the question, the ad hoc committee, the members of the ad hoc committee, will they serve the entire term of the project into next year and after the next board, et cetera, or not? Or will you have new people come in?
Well, that'll be up to the, to the, to the board at the time, but I, my, my, my thinking is that what we're, what we're focused on right now is getting through a successful vote. That's what we've charged them with, with doing, get us, get a vote package together and get it successfully through the members. Once that's done and we enter the design phase, some of those board members may for personal reasons decide that, that, that was a, that they like to move on and maybe others that make sense to put in in the design, in the detailed design and permitting phase. So I, you know, we, we, it would be, I think, it would be up to the individual members and the board whether they continue or we have, have some shuffling. I would think that it's likely that there'd be some shuffling naturally just because people have other commitments in the out years, but I'll leave that up to the board.
So let me just see if I'm understanding this correctly. This, the existing members of the ad hoc committees will last through the fourth quarter of 2021?
Their, their responsibility is to give us to a vote. Now, once the vote's over and the board and, and the, and the board looks to the next phase, detailed design, they may very well just keep the same committee, same two committees. And it will make some sense for continuity, but that's, but I would think that there would not be unusual that some people might feel like they've put, they've given as much time as they can and others might be eager to decline. So, but the.
At a minimum through the end of.
Get us through.
At a minimum, the end of, or the end of, the end of the fourth quarter of 2021, at a minimum, everybody will be on.
Right. And then after that, after that, it's up to them.
Okay, there's a lot of can I ask my question now? The, it has to do with communications. Throughout your report, you talk about continue to gather member comments, solicit member feedback. And you committed to a 30, every 30 day report for the board. It seems to me, maybe this is a comment as opposed to a question, it seems to me that we need to make sure that there is a communication plan for not only the board, but for the entire community to understand where they are, what's going on. The health updates, as Tim can tell you, are probably the most popular things ever since COVID-19. Everybody reads that. And we had all the hotwire communications that were done when hotwire was being put in. So I really recommend that a lot of focus be put on communicating to the community so that they know that what's going on every month. And the board knows what's going on every month, et cetera. And some of those things should be more than just the written word, but also maybe videos or presentations that are, if they're done by, go to meetings, web, webpages, that's fine, but there should be something more than just go to this site and read these minutes. That's not going to happen.
Right. Well, and, and as we talked earlier about doing the same. Right. Well, uh, and, and as we talked earlier about doing the same format, uh, special board meeting with a go-to meeting and let people get online and listen and ask questions in that format to include that also. I, I agree with that. And we, we look at the chart for the, the deliverables for the committees. The vote package is one of the deliverables. The other deliverable is the, uh, member communication and engagement strategy. And going back to General Wishett's, uh, comment about you can't communicate too much. Uh, and these sorts of things, uh, we need to have a strategy. We need the committees to come up with a strategy for detailed, uh, communication continuous over the whole life of the project.
Larry, I think when we had a, had a meeting and, and Tim had the first email that went out from the club, we had agreed that we would have an update every two weeks to the community. I think that's in the minutes. So this is kind of the next two weeks after the first uh, emails. So that went out from Tim. So I think that that was our agreement then was, would be a, a by month, twice a month, we would have an update to the members.
All right. I don't recall that.
I could be mistaken, but I think that's, that's what we.
I have a question. Can you hear me?
Yes, Sandy.
I'd asked you this before and didn't get an answer. You have two more months on your term with the board. And Gail and Tom have one more year each. Are you going to continue as the chair of the ad hoc committee? Or will it be the new president of the board that will chair the ad hoc committee?
No, I will not continue. That, this, the, the intent is, the ad hoc committee, the ad hoc committee is two people, the president and the, and the treasurer. And the reason for that is because it's, it's, it's a critical proj, uh, project. And we wanted the president to be personally involved in the, in the, in the project at the ad hoc committee level. The other point is uh, the financing and the, and the, and the budgets. And because we have two major projects going on, the balancing of the budgets for the two of those, uh, and in a way that is, uh, is, uh, not hurtful to the club is critical. And so that's why we had, we had the treasurer slash finance committee chair as the other co-chair of the ad hoc committee. So no, when I, when my, my, uh, term is done, uh, the, the next president, I would, I would recommend the next president would also take on the ad hoc committee role.
Okay. Thank you.
Can I just make a point then, um, as you're discuss, discussing the role of, um, the chair and also the, the next chair will be the president. You should probably make it clear to the current ad hoc committees, their role is through phase one and not indefinitely for the couple of years because you really leave it, um, rather undecided. Uh, you know, you're saying it's up to the board. Well, the board had nothing to do with appointing this committee. It was appointed by you. We approved it in advance. So I think you should just make clear to the committees what their term is. That's not saying they can't be continued, but it should be defined.
Right. Okay. I, I think we, we, we did, uh, we did invite all the committees to participate today. But yes, we will, uh, we will do that separately. Uh, other comments and question, or questions? Ben, do you have any member questions or comments?
Uh, yeah, we have several, uh, questions from memberships. So I'll, uh, for that.
Was a question from Joe O'Connell. He asked, what percentage of members is required for a plan to proceed?
So to answer that, um, the percentage of members that, what that would be required for a plan to proceed, um, based on our current documents, would be a majority of those that vote with a quorum present at a member meeting.
Okay. The next question is from, uh, Mr. Nottingham. And he asks, why are the golf and facilities packages being combined into one vote? Should they be separate?
You want to answer that one, Mr. Traul, or?
Yeah, go ahead.
Question was whether they should be separate votes. With the, with the intent that the project is going to occur uh, at the same time, that was the reason for having both projects voted on at the same time. Do you have anything to add, Mr. Traul?
Yeah, uh, yeah, that if, if we voted on separately and one was approved and one wasn't approved, then, and, and eventually the, the one that was not approved got approved, that put it out of, out of sync and then we have disruption two different summers. Uh, so the thought was put the best package together, engage the members. Uh, uh, ensure that we get a, a successful vote so that we have the, uh, projects going at the same time to minimize a disruption to the club. Another question.
Yes, our next question is from, uh, Mr. Dan Graziano. And he asks, how was the decision made to move the member vote from spring to fall of 2020?
Uh, in, in, we had a discussion with the, with, with Jeff, the owner's rep. And we laid out conceptually the schedule. And the feeling was that to, to vote on this in February, March or April, we wouldn't have enough information. Uh, we wouldn't have, uh, would not have enough time to, uh, to have the conceptual drawings together and, and, and communicate with the members. Uh, and, uh, it was, it's unclear and still unclear what uh, this first quarter or the season is going to look like this year, uh, because of the pandemic. So the feeling was, uh, that we would, we would take, uh, due time, uh, between now and October to put the, all the package together, uh, communicate thoroughly with the members on both packages. Uh, and hopefully by the fall, uh, the pandemic will have passed, uh, we hope. Uh, and members would be looking for the future. And that, that was why we, and, and Jeff, Jeff was of the opinion that there wasn't sufficient time to do the, uh, to, to do the, um, do all that needed to be done to get a vote package together, uh, and, and do justice to the members and the communication to the members. The other thing is, and you, you see from the schedule, the the committee and the board made it clear that we weren't going to start another project until the current project was paid off. The club, club renovations paid off, which is in February of 2023. So that meant that, that, if that's true, then we weren't going to get a new loan until after that. February, March or April of 2023. That's when the construction would start. So there was no need to rush the, uh, uh, rush the, uh, the approval of the, of the projects to February, March or April of this year, this next year. When we, we had enough time to do it, uh, and still get it done in, in October through December of next year, of, of, of next year. Yeah. There was no need, no need to rush it because we weren't going to do anything in construction wise until, uh, till the second quarter of 2023.
Okay. Next question, uh, also from Mr. Graziano. Uh, yes. Has our attorney reviewed and approved the contract with the owner's representative?
Yeah. The answer to that is yes.
Okay. Next question is, uh, has the board approved the contract with the owner's representative? And will the board be asked to approve the contract with the architect?
Um, I don't know if you want to answer that one, Mr. Traul. But I mean, the board didn't specifically approve the contract with the owner's rep. Um, that was engaged and signed by myself, um, after review and interviews with the ad hoc committee. Um, there was a second part to that question. Oh, will the board be asked to approve the contract with the architect? That obviously is going to be a, a larger agreement. I would assume that it would be with the ad hoc committee. Uh, Mr. Traul, I'm not sure. You want to talk to whether that would actually go to the board, um, for that agreement?
Mm-hmm. With, with this next phase, yeah. Um, and we haven't, we haven't talked about that since we're not, not, uh, close to a decision. But I, I would be fine with taking that to the board.
What are the rules?
Has to go to the board.
Hey, over a certain amount, Larry. Don't you have to go to the board for over a certain amount of dollars?
Right. Yes.
Yeah.
Also, isn't the, aren't the rules that if you have an ad hoc committee, which is really an advisory committee to the board, so it would actually go to the board?
Right.
Right. I'm saying, uh, that's why I, I think, I think it would make sense. Uh, I think it would make sense, uh, to bring it to the board and, and for a couple of reasons. One is, I, I think we don't know the full amount, but it'd probably be, I'm guessing in the area of fifty thousand dollars for the architect. It's something along those lines. Uh, but the other part of it is to keep the, keep the board in the loop on the, uh, the decision-making process. So I would, I would recommend that we bring that to the board at a board meeting or at a special board meeting.
Right. Next question. Why is no one from the Ashton Oaks community the most proximate buildings to the, to the club on the facilities committee?
Um, Gail's on the team. Gail's from Ashton Oaks. Yeah, I, I, that, that gets to a question of, uh, of, of the neighborhood representatives and, and the charts and the, the charge to the, to the committees are to represent all the members. And, and I, I, I just, I didn't feel that we wanted to have individual members of any particular, uh, neighborhood on there for the sole purpose of representing their neighborhood. Uh, all members, all, all fourteen, sixteen of the uh, of the board, of the committee members represent all the members here. And they need to, uh, take that into consideration when they're, uh, when they're, uh, deliberating. And I, I didn't, I, it seemed, seemed, uh, unnecessary to have a particular neighborhood represented for a particular question. Everybody should be concerned about the members of Ashton Oaks being satisfied with the, with the project, whatever it turns out to be.
And if it makes anybody feel better, we've already told the three architects that have come in to pitch that anything that's done um, has to be done with consideration of the people that live in those first few buildings of Ashton Oaks from a noise perspective and, and intrusion on, on your, on their lives.
Right.
Okay. Next one. This is a couple of comments and a question from Danielle or Denell Anderson. And it says, with this year of COVID and having a period of time where everything at the club was shut down, I believe we learned that made for a pretty miserable experience for residents and renters. I'm concerned about doing a whole year, only two years from right now. I think doing them separately would be the wisest thing for us, members who would like to enjoy the facilities we have here.
So, Tim, you want to talk to the, 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 and one of the, you may recall from the vote package, uh, the, one of the things that we wanted the vote package to include is a discussion of how the club was going to function during the construction phase, both projects. So, Tim, do you want to talk a little bit about that? We've talked a bit about it.
Yeah. So that's part of the rationale of doing both projects at once because they both certainly influence, influence each other operationally. So, um, for example, a vast majority of our lunch business is driven by golf. So if we were to do a project at the same time, it would likely, it would likely make sense not to be open for lunch. With that said, with the, with doing the project the right way, um, we could still likely, I don't know what the scope of work is yet, so I'm speaking in very general terms. But depending on what happens with the facilities, we'd be looking at doing it in such a way that we could likely stay open for dinner and still offer some services to members. So have activities, events, dining, um, if both projects were going on at the same time. So, you know, it's, I can certainly understand the concern of doing two things at once because it is a greater impact. Um, at the same time, to do two potentially significant projects over the course of a couple of years, it really is dragging out. You know, the, the construct that the members would have to deal with during that time.
And then a follow-up comment from Denell Anderson is, uh, I agree with the comments by the board that including committee members is important. I'm assuming, uh, about, of the standing committees. And that is all the questions and comments that I have from the membership.
Okay.
Uh, Larry, I ask a question. And Tim, on the, uh, construction side with meals and such, as I recall, the last time the building was being worked on, we went to Fisari as a sister club to have meals and such. Would that be an arrangement that would be done?
It really just depends on what the scope of work is as to whether that would be necessary. Um, if, if we were only touching the bistro and not affecting upstairs, uh, upstairs has its own kitchen. Um, and likely the way the permit could be pulled, we could actually continue to be operational upstairs. Uh, but again, it depends on the scope of work. If the, if the bistro was more involved, or I'm sorry, the grill room, um, and that area couldn't be used for any reason, we could certainly lean on some other clubs to, um, to have events like we did during the clubhouse renovation.
Same would be true of golf, Tim.
Right. Yeah. To the best, to the best, obviously, of what other clubs can do. We have the regular reciprocal season, um, that starts in May. Uh, but we certainly get asked quite frequently if we can accommodate other clubs because they start to shut down in, in April or mid-April, if they're doing a golf course renovation. Um, and Eric can work all of his contacts to accommodate members where possible. Obviously, April is still a season, so they're trying to accommodate their members. But if they have openings on the T-shirt, which often is the case when you get to middle, late April, then we can make arrangements for golf as well.
Okay. Any other questions from the board that, that's, or any other thoughts?
Not a question, Larry, but I appreciate your agreeing to weekly, uh, to monthly meetings. And do you think we can get a schedule so that we can put it on our calendars? And also, where will the ad hoc meetings be posted? So if we wanted to participate or listen in, I know we can't participate necessarily, that board members could be informed directly about what's going on.
Yeah. Tim, we're, we're posting those in the regular, using the regular, uh, protocol for posting. Is that right?
Uh, the ad hoc committee, like the other committees, you know, finance grounds, um, they're on the club website on the calendar for, uh, the booking of the rooms.
So how would you, uh, be able to tune in if, I mean, you know, there's a meeting, how do you get tuned into it? Obviously, we're not attending in person.
Um, and while if you wanted to attend, you could, um, let us know. We could give you a, a link to the meeting virtually, assuming that it is virtual, which I'm sure most will be.
Would it be possible to send the board notices of the meetings just so that if they do choose to listen in, they can?
Sure. Yeah. We can do that. Yep. Got that, Ben?
Yes. Uh, and, and yeah, I have a couple of more follow-up questions and comments from the members that we need to address. Um.
Okay.
There's, uh, many members attended a facility vision presentation a couple of years ago. Uh, I'm assuming she's referring to the master site planning that happened in two thousand seventeen, eighteen. What, what has happened to that work? And is it being considered as we go forward with this project?
So that, um, some of that work was accomplished, the parking lot portion. Uh, the other piece was the pushing of the bulkhead on number eighteen and that's still currently assumed as far as a golf course renovation plan goes. The other piece was the bistro. And there were three options on the bistro. And those options have been shipped to the architects that we're interviewing and will be looked at, uh, when we select an architect. But not that we would necessarily do the exact same thing, but consider those concepts. Anything to add to that, Mr. Traul?
Well, I, I would add that one of the reasons, I think, uh, we, we, well, we did share those designs, uh, those conceptual designs with the current architects, uh, the, the proposed architects. So just see what we were thinking a couple of years ago. But the project now may include also the fitness center. And so that might change the potential design. So the, what, what So what what Peacock and Lewis did back in seventeen, eighteen may or may not be applicable to what we might be doing. But we did share it with the with the architects as a data point.
Then one more follow up from Mr. Dan Graziano. It's not not why, how did the board decide? How how could the ad hoc committee, which was created on October twenty-third, interview and choose an owner's representative on October twenty-sixth? It's only a weekend in between.
I could add. So I have I had reached out to all the local bundle club and some private clubs for information on owner's reps months ago with the anticipation that we would be considering something. I wanted to find out the process that other clubs use and more specifically, who they use for architects and owner's reps. So I had already started to have discussions with various owners reps and betting it well well before this process, just to try to be a step ahead of things. So that's why things moved rather quickly after it was formed.
Right. And we got very positive feedback from the communities that you talked to, particularly about Jeff and and the and the value he added to the projects that the that the other clubs had done.
Yeah, the one club in fact said that he his contacts at the county, there was an issue with clubhouse project, and he actually hand walked it through the county, through the contacts that he has, and got it signed off on literally that day when they were when they had run into a roadblock before. Everyone that I spoke with, to use Jeff or or other owners reps for that matter, have said that their cost for the owner's rep was saved throughout the project. You save on change orders, you save on the negotiation with the different consultants. So everyone said that, yeah, while there is a cost associated, you're going to reap that benefit in money and time during the project.
Tim, could I just ask you for a little clarity? Were all of those projects that you're talking about regarding the experience with the owner's rep for the physical plant and not the golf course?
Right, they were for facility projects, clubhouse projects. Of cases groundwork, you know, civil engineering for moving dirt, creating art space.
Okay, but not golf course renovations?
No.
Okay.
No.
Thank you.
No, it wasn't. Okay, other questions or comments, Ben? Anything else?
No, that's all the questions from membership.
Okay, any other questions or comments from the board?
No, this has been very helpful to get together and and talk about this, so I'm looking forward to our monthly meetings.
All right, we'll schedule another one. I will to Betsy's point, we'll put a schedule together and we'll we'll work the communication plan on that. And we'll let everybody know how to sign in to the the subcommittee meetings also and join those as they choose to do.
Thank you, Larry. That would be very helpful.
To that point, as Mr. Pinkerton pointed out, we have two subcommittee meetings on the golf side tomorrow and one a week from tomorrow, so I will or Ben will shoot the board the information on that if you'd like to listen in.
The one tomorrow, did you use me tomorrow?
It's two.
Tomorrow, right? countryside ones tomorrow, right?
Yes, it is.
Yeah. And then meetings on the facility side will typically be on Friday afternoons. And I can shoot the board information when we book those virtual meetings.
Thank you.
But, Tim, we have been meeting in person, so we haven't done any virtual. Probably this Fridays is going to have to be virtual because we have one member that's not here. So we may have a couple that are virtual, but the rest of them will more than likely just be in person.
Okay, we'll still set up the virtual then.
Yeah, we'll set. I think we should set up the virtual anyway, given the circumstances we have right now, so.
Yeah, okay.
All right, very good. All right. Well, thank you very much, and I appreciate everyone's participation and their questions and comments. I think that was very helpful, and we will continue to do this. We'll send out a schedule for the next meeting. All right, thank you very much. Thanks, Tim. Thank you, Ben. Thanks for.
All right, thanks.